I'm going to call the combined open meeting of the, um, well, I'm going to call the combined open meeting of Tuesday, September 19th, 2017. Um, do order. Can I have, uh?
Okay, I'd like to call the Southboro School Committee to order.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm Union Secretary.
Me?
Yes, it's you.
Call the Union to order.
There you go. Okay, uh, we are now going to call the Regional School Committee or the Northboro School Committees into session because we do not have quorums for those, but we are going to proceed with the combined open meeting. So, everybody welcome. The first, uh, agenda item is audience sharing.
Now, before we welcome everyone in the audience this evening, we've just learned that we have a young Eagle Scout candidate with us this evening. Uh, Mr. Clancy, Jake Clancy is, um, here for his community service badge. One, one badge away.
One badge away.
One badge away, and that's it. So, we're here to celebrate that and, uh, welcome certainly Jake. He's a young, um, young man attending Malickin Middle School in Northboro. Oh, gone, freshman. You did attend Malickin Middle. There you go. And the lady that's beaming from ear to ear is Mom. That's her. Welcome to everyone, but certainly Jake, welcome and good luck.
And hold on to your seat because this is going to be scintillating. Okay, um, any other audience sharing? Oh, sorry, could not see you. Coming up to the mic.
Hello, um, my name's Michelle Brownlee. I'm the chapter leader for the Northboro-Southboro, uh, chapter. I'll start school later, and I just wanted to, um, speak to the combined school committee and just to show them that, first of all, we have really good effort we made with Superintendent Johnson and the Principal of St. Walsh of Albona. Uh, the reason I'm here is, um, that, I guess we, our efforts have been stalled for a little bit. Stalled is a good word, because a lot of it revolves around transportation. I know that's something that, uh, we're going to need to work together on as a community. So, I know the high schools have been very focused on this issue for a long time. We're really going to need buy-in from, uh, everybody in the community at, at all different levels in the district. So, I just wanted to, um, impart to you how important this issue is for our kids, uh, for the entire community, for the safety of people on the roads, both the, the kids who are driving and the other people who are on the roads who could interact with those kids. And, um, the science is unquestioned, I think, that, that our, our teens would benefit from a later start time, um, both in the high school and the middle school level. So, um, I think you're probably, most of you are already aware of that research. I know that there are resources on the district website, um, that you can refer to, but, um, you know, uh, there are a lot of parents who are behind the effort, and, uh, we want to support you in any way we can to help move this forward. Thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other audience sharing? Okay, then we're going to move on to the next item, uh, agenda item. Action on the Minutes, we're actually not going to move on to those because, uh, let's just do it while, when all board committees are here. So, we'll do it all at once. So, then the next, uh, agenda item? What? What? Oh, yes. Oh, you have a correction. I think we can take corrections even though we're not. Which one?
On the, um, the 97 special.
Yeah.
Page two, the motion for this is, we're missing a motion on behalf of the Superintendent to, I think we've got, oh, no, I don't know.
Page three.
Oh, page two. Bottom of page two, we have Northboro-Southboro, one, that being Superintendent.
And with the two who motioned, that's the, that's the Union. That would be Northboro-Southboro Regional probably should be replaced by, on behalf of the Superintendent to Union, number three.
Right. I remember, yeah. I'm pretty sure I motioned and that's.
Yep, Mr. Case, so that's, uh, Superintendent to Union.
Can I also make the correction? I was not there, I was in the car.
You were there in spirit.
I was there in spirit, I was driving.
On the phone.
On the phone. So, I, take me off as present for, uh, Union and Southboro.
Thank you. Okay, well, you have until the next combined meeting to look for any other errors.
In the meantime, we'll make these corrections.
In the meantime, we will make these corrections. Okay, then moving on to the next agenda item, which is our NSPAC presentation.
We're very excited to have NSPAC with us here this evening. Uh, we closed the school year, uh, in June with the NSPAC presentation, and, uh, it's very appropriate to open our new, um, school year with NSPAC as well. A lot of, uh, progress has been made over the summer with the meetings that we've held to, um, develop a plan and a timeline for this year.
Is that our NSPAC presentation walking in?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
I'll just keep saying wonderful things.
Just keep working.
Absolutely. Uh, we worked together this summer to make sure that some of the things that we had been, um, talking about, uh, and have successfully implemented continue. And together, we developed a schedule of, um, collaborative presentations. One of them was held last, uh, evening here on campus, and, uh, PAC will be sharing more information, NSPAC, about the, um, meetings that are coming up this school year. So, it was a very positive, very productive, um, session this summer, and we look forward to that same continued spirit of support, um, for the good work that they do as an organization and the work that our teachers and our, um, administrators and, uh, staff do to support their efforts as well. So, it was a wonderful, um, start to the school year. And I am almost done. PAC would like to begin their presentation. I've, um, shared, uh, with them that we have a new officer, with everyone, that we have a new officer team. And this evening, I think, uh, the new President, Jen Drowan, has a presentation prepared for us, PowerPoint.
Nothing like doing it when you're out of breath.
Yes. Welcome.
I'm taking a day late in the dollar shot. I'm six-thirty, I'm actually early.
Exactly. I like that. I, I agree. I thought it was six-thirty until I phoned down on Sunday. There was something that said.
Something was six-thirty.
Jen, do you have a lifesaver for you if you'd like? I was going to say, I mean, we can move up to the next agenda.
Why don't we do, yeah, we'll do the next agenda.
If you want a few minutes?
Do you want to see that?
It's just loading.
It's just loading? Do you want a few minutes? Because we can do the next one.
Why don't we do the next one?
Go ahead, do the next one. Okay. All right, then let's go on to personnel update, and we'll come back to Jen.
So, the minutes that we just took a look at and, um, some corrections were made, were actually, because we have, uh, someone joining our team, um, on Monday. Start time is Monday, so moving up that special combined meeting really did give us an opportunity to have our new Director of Finance and Operations, Matthew Wells, who was unanimously appointed by the combined meeting, uh, and members of the combined school committee meeting in all three districts on, um, just two weeks ago, I think. And Matt is here again this evening, uh, for everyone to ask additional questions of his last two weeks in Contra-Carlyle and his plans for, um, joining Northboro-Southboro, but he's been a frequent visitor. He's been, uh, on campus for probably three or four times since we appointed him and getting to know the staff and getting to know our district a little bit. So, Matt, um, is in the office, and, and, and look, it's official, I'm lost. This is the first time we've actually had it, um, ready for someone's arrival.
Hi, I'm Matt. I need everyone to, some of you, I'm, um, the seventh of this special meeting. Um, I'm looking forward to starting on Monday very much looking forward to it. This last week in Congress was a little rough, um, trying to close out a lot of things months early, so, um, looking forward to actually starting it, so that I can move forward in many years with this. Questions for me that you'd be happy to answer?
Welcome.
Welcome.
Yes, sir. Welcome aboard.
Glad it's all worked out.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Great, thanks. And just as a, a note, of course, um, Matt will be joining us. We're happy of that, but we're also sad that, um, Cheryl Levesque, uh, will be retiring. She, of course, is not sad after, I don't know, thousands of school committee meetings and many warrants and many budgets successfully passed because of her efforts and her true dedication and commitment to our district for over thirty years in several roles. Um, she will be retiring on November 30th, and so we're really pleased that we've had an opportunity to have transition, uh, with, with Matt coming on board so that, um, the budget season for FY19 is soon. And now, one of his first challenges will be, um, meeting with us to begin that process.
I'm glad it all worked out.
And I thank the committees for, um, moving so quickly. It's tough to find the right applicant and, uh, someone who wants to take on three districts. And, uh, we did, and appreciate the fact that we were able to have a combined meeting and get him on board as quickly as possible. And also to the school committee members who participated in the interview process. Mary Becht was one of them, and Sue Lawrence from Northboro.
We are very, very, very fortunate.
And Tatum. We have region, Northboro, and Southboro well represented.
We look forward to many, many years of seeing you at school committee meetings.
Just block out Wednesdays.
Lots of them.
All right, now let's go back to, oh, sorry.
Oh, no, I just had a question since we kind of, um, personnel update.
Okay.
Welcome to Matt, and sorry, um, but I, I just had a question on noticing that we're appointed Assistant District Technology Manager. Is that like a new organization? Are we going to get, like, uh, also hire a director?
Right. So, TJ was the, the gentleman that we had spoken about through the budgeting process. He's actually been in the district. He was in the Northboro District as a instructional tech specialist. And so, he, um, moved to Central Office last year during the budget cycle, and we were able to actually bring him on, uh, full-time at the district level. So, TJ's actually been in the district for some time. That's just a restructuring of, of titles and really a restructuring of technology that's been taking place throughout the summer. Uh, we have a wonderful team that has accomplished, uh, really significant activities, um, throughout the summer, working together in, in a very collaborative way, project managing, some of the things that we've been trying to move forward. Um, we, we have been presenting, uh, a back-to-school update at each of the committees, uh, and each of this, uh, the September school committee meetings, and we will move that to the regional meeting next month so that we can share with the regional committee, and, um, TJ will be here as well, as well as Andy Mariotti, and, um, sharing some of the things that we've accomplished with technology over the summer. One of them, of course, is maybe towards the Canvas Learning Management System, as well as bringing up some additional hardware into the district. So, we'll be providing more of that. With respect to the technology director's position, um, we are not, um, there is no shortage of projects right now that we are project managing to bring up and see those come to fruition. So, we're being mindful of when the appropriate time is, but we've also spent a lot of time, um, reassuring the folks that are in the commu, in our districts that we value the work that is being done and appreciate how much they've actually done as a, as a working team, um, sort of boots-on-the-ground, if you will, uh, with the work that they've been doing. So, we've really been, um, taking a look at their job classifications and their job descriptions, which definitely needed some, uh, revision. So, we're fortunate that we're able to keep them in the district because these positions are very difficult to fill. Thank you for asking that.
And I have a second question on personnel. So, I see that, um, Stacy Clickman was the Assistant Director of Special Ed, and she's leaving or left. So, I know we did some reorganization around the Special Ed department, so is that position going to be advertised and filled as it, or are we going to do other reorganization around availability of positions?
We spent a long time trying to get the model right. The model is right, now we need to fill it. Um, Stacy returned to the district that she came to us from, um, and one of her passions was the counseling and the guidance, uh, guidance focus, and that's actually where she's returned to. Um, but what we have learned is that we're not restructuring in any way. This is the model that is effective, uh, but that one of the things that we do want to add to the position is really a K-12 focus on the guidance curriculum, just as we have that K-12 focus on horizontal and vertical alignment in the academic areas. So, that was helpful to us because it gave us some insight into ourselves, gave us an opportunity to reflect and think about the kinds of pieces that we might be missing in the focus. So, this position has been advertised, it's not imposted, it's a difficult position to fill, and we've added that additional focus to it, but absolutely no change in the restructuring.
Okay.
And if you've had a look at Marie lately, you can tell she's really looking forward to finishing this position. And we've been interviewing, but we just don't want a person, we want the right person.
Just wanted, same thing, changing.
Thank you. I was going to, I was going to say the same thing. So, thank you.
Okay, so, personnel being over, we're going to move back to the NSPAC presentation. It's all loaded.
So, I have, um, produced a very short, um, presentation tonight, and, um, I know you had a very detailed presentation in June, and so, tonight, really, the focus is going to be on, um, kind of what our activities are for this year and, um, how we took some of the information from our survey last year and, um, brought it together and brought it with Student Support Services to try to, um, best decide what kind of presentations we were going to do. Um, so, just as an overview, I, overview, I think you saw this last year, but, um, this year, I am, um, the president. We also have Ruth Reeve, um, in the back. She is a co-Vice President. Veronica Frata, Deb Roberts, and Liz Nolan. Um, we all kind of bring something to the table. Um, uh, you'll see some of us at maybe a coffee hour or some of us at a presentation. We usually don't, are, are not able to all be there at one time, but usually, you'll see one of us at, um, at a presentation. Um, this just goes over a little bit, um, about who we are and what we do. This is actually, um, most of this information was, um, from, uh, last year's presentation, but basically, we try to provide, um, ongoing educational programs, um, based on our feedback, um, and we got quite a bit of feedback from our last survey. Um, we tried to partnership with, um, Student Support Services and not try to re-embed the wheel, and this year, they're going to be coming to our coffee hours, um, so we will have, um, representation, um, from both Student Support Services and, um, the Central Office Administration coming to, um, our coffee hours. We also have, um, this year, we're doing a lot of partnerships with other CPACs around, um, with Shrewsbury and Hopkinton and Westboro, and we're also trying to, um, see what they're doing and try not to duplicate services and, and presentations with, um, with some of the things that we're doing. So, and then lastly, we always have an annual celebration, um, for members, um, who kind of go the extra di, distance for special education students, and that's really one of the highlights of our year. Um, so, last, last year, you saw the survey and, um, some of the results, and in red, I just put that one of the big things that we chose to do this year is, uh, a lot of people needed not only morning, but evening and weekend events. We have really tried this year to do more, um, more of a switch of, uh, every other month doing morning and weekend, so, um, those who, um, maybe work during the day can come to the evenings and, um, vice versa. Uh, we don't have any, uh, weekend events, um, as of yet, but we're working on it. Um, you also saw what the top requested workshops were, and, um, in red, um, so far, this is what we have, um, coming in the future, um, and coming in the fall. Um, last night, actually, was one of the first ones. Jessica Minahan did, um, a great job at doing, um, reducing anxiety in children. I heard, I've heard a lot of really good feedback. I've seen her in the past, but I've heard a lot of really good feedback from, um, last night's presentation. Um, we're also doing executive functioning, basic rights in special education will be coming up next week. Um, we're doing an introduction to transition planning with one of the other CPACs. And also, this year, um, the Federation for Children in Special Needs and, uh, and the UMass Insurance Center ha, are offering a kind of workshop all about mass health, premium assistance, and some social service supports, which is great because that can be really, really confusing for folks. So, this is just a, a false snapshot of what we're doing. Um, like I said, last night, um, keynote speaker was Jessica Minahan. Uh, next week, we're doing basic rights, and that's going to be, um, uh, here at, uh, the library. Um, we're also partnering with, um, some local community businesses, um, the, and the Westboro CPAC and the Shrewsbury CPAC are going to present a free workshop by, um, a licensed social worker out of, uh, Westboro. Um, they just opened, uh, a new office called Child Therapy Boston, and so, it'll be a good way for not only people to see kind of, um, you know, come to the presentation, but also, um, get some information about, um, maybe some possible resources that are in our community. And, and then lastly, like I said, um, in October, we're going to be doing, um, introduction to the, uh, transition planning process, and we're cosponsoring that with Hopkinton, at Hopkinton. Um, these are a few of our coffee and connect times, and like I said, um, for the first fifteen minutes of every coffee and connect, they will be, um, Marie or Deb, or Marie or Deb, or, and whoever the new person will be to come in and, um, discuss concerns, or maybe there's a particular topic of interest that's kind of going around, and, um, so, they'll be coming in. We had our first one, um, in September, and, um, we're trying to flip-flop between Northboro and Southboro so that, um, everybody can kind of have a fair chance to get there. Um, our wish list, um, is pretty much what, uh, we talked about, uh, last, uh, June. Um, we would love to connect with liaisons, um, from the school committee. I know a couple, uh, committees have already had meetings under their belts and probably have, um, liaisons already in place, um, but connect with us, um, and, um, you know, more than welcome to come to any of our meetings, any of our presentations, and just to kind of get a feel for what, what we do, what, what kind of things that, um, we're providing to, um, families in the district. Um, we also welcome any communication between the school committee and the PAC. Um, you know, when you're going to do policies and budgets, if you, um, you know, if you want input with regards to kind of, um, how that affects certain populations within the special education community, we're always happen, happy to talk to you about that. Um, we'd love to continue to do a beginning and an end-of-the-year presentation with our goals and activities, and, um, continued support of the district with our annual MassPAC membership. Our MassPAC membership allows us to, um, be able to have speakers come in from, um, places like the Federation of Children with Special Needs, and, um, they can do, um, free presentations for us. Um, so, how to follow us, how to communicate with us, you can sign up for our listserv, and you can get all, um, all kinds of information on things that are going on in our district and also, um, in our surrounding districts. You can follow us on Facebook. We, um, have a website which you, if you go on to the district website, you can click right on to it. It's www.nspac.org, and also, you can always contact any of us at nspac1@gmail.com. That's kind of an overview as to what we're doing this year, and, um, I do have, um, all of our speaker series for this fall that I'll pass around, and that's it. If anybody has any questions, feel free to let me know, but you can always contact, uh, contact us if you do.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a very exciting update. We are about to realize, uh, phase one, uh, and I, and I think that's, uh, a great way to introduce the partners that we've made. It's taken some time for Ty and Bond to review, uh, a lot of information that was sent to them. Uh, we did send that to them over the summer. I know Northboro Town of and Southboro Town of is still continuing, uh, down the same path, and, um, we do have a date set for Ty and Bond to come, uh, to our district at Central Office immediately. The original members of the subcommittee, we sent out a poll and identified a date that seemed to be in everyone's schedules, complex schedules. Heard back from Brian E. Angus, who is our representative from Ty and Bond. She was present when we did the, um, initial interviews, uh, of the, um, the folks who had submitted RFQs, and, um, they too are very anxious. They're, um, the meeting is scheduled for October 16th, and she did reach out and, um, there are several aspects of phase one that we'll be discussing. Uh, one, the validation of the research that they conducted, and we did, um, end up not only having a roof analysis, but also, um, carport coverage. So, uh, they did go ahead, based on our suggestions, that they continue to do that, and that was with no additional cost to the analysis, and, uh, they'll be reviewing all of that. And it may be the case that on that day, we will also be able to choose the five sites that we are most interested in pursuing and, um, moving forward into phase two. So, with all of that information shared, uh, there will be some decisions made. Uh, I looked quickly at, um, the findings, not showing what any of the validation numbers meant at that time, but we're going right to the bottom. They classified it as good or as acceptable, and so, um, many of our campuses, uh, fall in the good range. Uh, we know from their initial conversation with us that, um, the return on the investment is not always there with the carport model, even though it's become incredibly popular and maybe maximizes the land. So, the, I think the, um, presentation will be very exciting. We're also then, from that point, um, the sub, the committee will make a determination if we'd like to come to a, a broader, um, audience, that being school committee and maybe the community. I know Mark Purple, the Town Administrator, and John Cudia, the Town Administrator in Northboro, have both confirmed as well to be present at the meeting. So, it's going to be exciting, a lot of good information to be shared, and from that meeting, we could, um, end up having our five identified sites based on the information they provide, and then moving, um, forward with their assistance, um, to, to, to write and, um, submit, uh, RFPs. So, that's the update. Here comes the sun.
So, went on the 16th, I mean, is it nighttime, afternoon?
Nine to 11.
Nine to 11 a.m.?
A.m.
Okay.
And it will be at Central Office.
Excellent.
Yes, good information.
Thank you very much.
And a lot of it, so, it'll be a fact-filled, two hours.
That's a lot of work. It's not the last you're going to hear of this, is it?
No, no, not, not, not a lot of, uh, certainly not the last conversation with Solar. I, I imagine if we move into the RFPs, uh, phase two, there'll be, um, considerable conversation. It will be, you know, several weeks and months to just put that RFP together with their assistance. And then we have the, you know, funding, about how, what is actually the financial return. Okay, then moving on to start time. We did have a very, um, collaborative, I thought very positive, meeting with, um, the Start Time Later Organization, well-represented and, um, familiar faces to us. Uh, we have been sort of exploring this, uh, through research and through active conversations for three years now. It was something that, uh, probably was the first, um, topic that was on my, my new Superintendent's agenda at that point, three years ago, and I've had many conversations with the Start Time Later folks, conducted surveys, and, um, as was suggested, the research is clear, and the findings seem to be consistent for, for certain, that this is, um, something we want to seriously consider. The challenge has been with the configuration of our district, it's not just about transportation, it's about being respectful of the, the K-12, um, district that we enjoy, and that, um, we wanted to be mindful of all of the concerns and considerations that were, are present. At the meeting, uh, we were fortunate to have representation from, um, each of our school committees. Um, Jerry Capel was there, Kathleen was there for region, and Patty was there for, uh, Northboro. So, we had a great opportunity to have, um, some very good conversations about where, where we can go. And so, the school committee's, um, conversation, um, and sort of charge over the past months and years of discussion has been to explore what would be a no-cost option as a first option. What we have been able model and that investigatory process, it could well be that we're able to find more minutes. But initially, we've centered around 20 minutes. We have a model for that, and we know that moving everyone later is the most reasonable no-cost option for the K-12 system without significantly impacting the start times of the other schools. So that's what we've centered on for discussion this evening. I think it does bring about some interesting findings that we may come, come about as we explore just that option. It's a start. It's a start in, in moving in the right direction that is feasible and is not, is cost-neutral. But what I'm hopeful is that as we dig deeply into just investigating that time and those issues, that we may be able to find more minutes, that we can not only move and apply towards a later start time with the high school, but also sort of maintain some consistency at the K-8 level by identifying other savings of time through analysis of our current routes. I mentioned at the meeting that Jay Sullivan, who is the Department of Education's transportation, financial, business guru, he's an amazing man who has just a wealth of information, was asked to attend MARS, which is the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools. I was on, I'm on the board, and I raised it as an issue that affects all of the regional school districts in a way that it does not affect a single district or a K-12 regional. And based on that, the board did invite Jay, and he did present to us. And it was quite informative. And so some of the assumptions that we have routinely made about transportation are not necessarily accurate. And so now we go forward examining that 20 minutes and with new information, which might allow us to do some consolidation of buses and routes, and still not unpack our regional transportation, thereby then not impacting the cost to the K-8s. So I think this is very, very much an exciting opportunity. And we look forward to continuing to collaborate and, you know, build a stronger partnership with them. One of the aspects of the research that we've done is that oftentimes, that's all you can see, is because that's all you, that's all you know, based on the research and the analysis that you've done. And so what I would like to propose to the committee is that we bring someone forward who can manage this task, and this task is now identified, 20 minutes, the feasibility of 20 minutes, and to do so in a very strategic, sort of new lens approach. And we do have someone, we're very fortunate that we have someone in the district who is in their role as a school committee members, exploring this very topic at Watch Uset Regional. And she is someone who we have on staff. It's Christina Smith, I keep saying, that's her maiden name, 20 years ago. It's actually Christina Wilson, and it has been for 20 something years. But she's been around that long, and Christina Wilson has led the NIESC accreditation process and did so masterfully, tremendous amount of work. She is also pursuing stress on adolescents in her doctoral study and is investigating the same topic for Watch Uset Regional. Besides that, I know her to be someone incredibly detail-oriented, determined, and very articulate in her findings. She has agreed, and I throw this to the will of the committee, to spearhead this particular task force. Her role will be to reach out to all of us, committee members, for, you know, additional information, present her findings, of course, access the knowledge and the wealth of resources that would be available to her through the Start Time Later organization, and also then be, you know, meeting with our bus company. So she's sort of a, a new lens on this topic. And hopefully, we can find some additional minutes as we pursue this with still a no-cost impact to the K-8s. So that's what we're hoping. So I, you know, I bring this up for discussion. I think we've made significant progress, and I'm sure we're going to move forward in a positive direction. Reasonable timeline, final findings and recommendations to the committee, open session in March at our combined meeting.
I have a question. So what time would the high school be starting?
7:40.
Okay. So, because last year you did away with homeroom, right?
The homeroom had more to do with complying with the 990 required minutes of instruction.
So there's no homeroom now?
No.
But this adds, but this adds to what that taught you, right?
It, it adds, it's the start time later of the school day. The additional time without homeroom was a selection by the high school at that time to comply with the 990 requirements. So it doesn't impact, and it doesn't necessarily give us any more time one way or the other, it just moves it all forward 20 minutes. I do know Dr. Walsh and I have had several conversations about continuing to explore the actual schedule, what happens once school starts and what happens when school ends. And that's really a separate discussion from start time, because whatever happens in between is going to happen within those minutes. And also to maintain our compliance with the 990 hours. So there's sort of three tracks that eventually will convene. We also, you know, are looking forward and realize that the landscape of education is changing. And, you know, three years ago, when the presentation was made, it was somewhat, let's think, out of the box in terms of what should we be delivering in terms of our educational day? It was, you know, it's not just the hands of the clock. And so we're also hopeful that as we continue to embrace that notion, that the day has to change because students are learning in a very different way, that we will then be able to continue that forward movement of moving the start time even more as we move forward. So some very exciting, exciting opportunities to start.
Just as an note, so people know that we're also moving the end of the day.
Yes.
Okay, so, so it's not, we're moving up 20 minutes and over 20 minutes. So it's the same, this is the same amount of time.
But you're saying shift all in, I think all three districts are in sort of a, there's three buses, so everybody is going to shift 20 minutes. But when you're saying picking up minutes, you're trying to say, can we, can we condense that end time a little and not have as much time in between?
In between runs.
In between runs. That's where we're going to pick up minutes.
No, it'll be after nine o'clock, or it will be there? Yeah.
And the challenge, of course, is to do that without any incremental expense.
Absolutely.
So there can't be an extra bus, or it has to be without incremental expense. So that's what we're, that's the challenge.
But with the opportunity and the conversations about bus routes, we just had a meeting this morning with the high school staff. I asked them for historical information about what the percentage of students is in terms of how many students do not take the bus day one. And so we have five years, I've learned, of data that may prove helpful to us with the new information that we've learned about bus transportation and requirements. And I was quite pleased, you know, it was sort of our invitation, our district's invitation to bring Jay in. And there were a number of regional schools present at the meeting, and it was, it was open to just the regional school superintendents at that time. And they too are, walked away with, wow, we didn't realize that. So the notion is we're all aware of the research. We want to be responsive to that. And how can we do that that makes sense given the restrictions? And I think it was a little enlightening for all of the regional superintendents to hear and to have negated some of what is commonly believed to be the case around ridership and impacts to our, our regional transportation, which is, is something that is very significant to all three districts. So I, I feel renewed around this topic. And I think that with a new pair of lens coming in and not necessarily having those who are involved and have been involved through this process, taking a look at that sort of neutral zone to do the analysis, I think we're going to be able to get some more return of, of information that will be helpful to us. And it is my hope that through that and that application of information, you know, maybe the tiers can be restructured. The worst, I don't mean to be worst case, but the, the biggest impact would be if we all move the 20 minutes. With a re-examination of the tiers and the analysis of the runs that North Reading Transit will be providing to Christina, if the committee feels this is a positive way to move, I think we'll be able to pick up some minutes. So it is a 20-minute shift to elementary.
It's a 20-minute shift here, but it's, it's a smaller shift for each of the other.
And we may even be able to redeploy some of the buses that are coming here to go to the most outlying districts. We are geographically quite far afield. And so, you know, for those buses to run, it may be possible to redeploy those buses, in which case then the outlying areas could be picked up and dropped off first. So it's, it's going to be an interesting process.
Lynn, do you have a question that in no way could be misconstrued as deliberation?
I don't know.
What's your question?
No, I was just going to say it's, it's good to hear the progress. It was just more of a comment than a question. So I just, you know, it's good that, to hear the progress and, you know, 20 minutes is a, I think it's a good start. And I think it'll, it'll be enough that it kind of make a difference. I know they've kind of thrown out like, what about five or whatever, but I think 20 would be something to start with.
It might be light up. It might be light up by the time they get the bus.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Yeah, and then they won't interfere with my commute. Not to be, not, anyway. But actually, that is kind of a benefit, because they'd kind of be a little bit later and, and not be on the road as, as many, you know, commuters. So I'm trying to be funny, but it is kind of a benefit.
And that's part of what I know the data would be that Christina will be accessing and her group is, you know, traffic studies that have been, because we don't know what Route 9 is going to be like, and we don't know what Route 20 is going to be like when we put 42 buses out there, you know? And that will remain to be seen, as well as a lot of other information that's accessible to them, so.
Sounds like a good plan moving forward.
Okay.
Okay, excellent. Next is discussion of superintendent's goals and evaluation process.
Well, it just seemed like we went through this process and somewhere along the way, and here we are. So this is not embedded in the document that you used in June, in the year, but it is a synopsis that you'll find in a more tangible way when you follow the link that I'm going to provide, which will take you directly to the same tool that was available to you last year. So I did have the opportunity to meet with the chairs of each of the school committees, and we did have some conversation about the goals for this year. And I do want to just share with you that I feel beyond what's written in the paper, that one of the most important roles that I will have this year is to welcome to our district a new director of finance and operation, a new high school team with the exception of Michelle Tantadonato, and a new principal at Woodward School, and the move from a former assistant principal to a principal. And Greg and I work as a team, and we have been partnering to make sure that our newest administrators receive the support that they need to be successful and to be the start of the next generation of administrators in, in the district. And that is a goal that is embedded in the natural course of being a superintendent of a district. But to me, I, I hold that in the highest regard in, in terms of what I would expect, you would expect from me in my role as superintendent. The director of finance position, I did so noted as a goal. We are still implementing not a lot of the curriculum, but as you heard from, some of you heard from Rebecca, we were able to implement the other modules of budget sense. And again, it isn't that there were gaping holes or that there was anything wrong with the process, it's just moving forward to the next evolution of what has been done well. And so we want to continue that path and look for efficiencies. We've been very successful at implementing the modules that we've been talking about, and we see the positive results already in terms of the attendance taken. So those, and the throughput to finance. I think, you know, part of the interview process was that Matt loves budget sense. I was a little overwhelmed by that because he's the first one that I've ever heard said he loves budget sense. We have a lot of other adjectives, but love budget senses. So we're excited about digging deeply into the budget projection modules, so they've never really been used for the budgeting process, which will be kind of exciting and innovative for us. So last year, I didn't provide this particular document, so I wanted to make sure that you had that before you this evening. And I'll just highlight them mostly for public consumption as you have the document in front of you. Professional practice goal, I'm still serving on the board of MARS, and also by chatter because we are a member of the Assavet Valley Collaborative, I'm on the board, but I'm also the finance subcommittee superintendent representative for the Assavet Valley Collaborative. So I sit and review the financial budgets and also the budgets they're going to propose going forward, which you all see as part of the approval process. I value the experience of serving on these two boards, and I think that, you know, the ability to come back into district and share that wealth of experience that I'm able to benefit from, all the superintendents in the areas, our 11 school districts, and adjust the discussion around, so what are you doing about school start time? Or, you know, and to say, we need to get Jay Sullivan into the district was incredible. And so I see that as a tremendous value to our districts in so many ways, and appreciate the opportunity to be able to serve in that capacity. The first district improvement goal, otherwise known as DI Goal One, I believe, is to continue to move us forward from strategically planning the future vision 2020 to whatever we determine will be 20 next. How far out we want to go depends on some discussions that we will, will have. As you all know, many of you were part of that very extensive digging deeply into our district when we created the plan that we have now, because time had passed before the last plan was in place. So it was sort of startup costs, right, in terms of time and input and so forth. We have made significant progress on the key indicators and the goals that are articulated in that particular plan, but we are moving beyond that. We are moving more towards a teaching and learning mindset with our strategic plan. Strategically planning the future vision 2020 is very tangible in that the plan contains a lot of specific, very, very visual pieces of growth. We can look now and say we're one-to-one. We were not one-to-one when the plan was created. We can say to you now, visit the Atlas website. We did not have alignment vertically and horizontally with our curriculum. We did not have expanded model of student support services, and we have added some programs to address the articulated needs that were expressed in that Vision 2020 process. Communication, of course, we can continue to grow, and that's always going to be a part of our plan, but we've made some significant improvements. We have finally created a So it was sort of startup costs, right, in terms of time and input and so forth. We have made significant progress on the key indicators and the goals that are articulated in that particular plan, but we are moving beyond that. We are moving more towards a teaching and learning mindset with our strategic plan. Strategically planning the future vision 2020 is very tangible in that the plan contains a lot of specific, very, very visual pieces of growth. We can look now and say we're one to one. We were not one to one when the plan was created. We can say to now, visit the Atlas website. We did not have alignment vertically and horizontally with our curriculum. We did not have expanded model of student support services, and we have added some programs to address the articulated needs that were expressed in that vision 2020 process. Communication, of course, we can continue to grow, and that's always going to be a part of our plan, but we've made some significant improvements. We have finally created a website where parents can click one time and see all their children's activities instead of, you know, the many clicks and links and try to find.
Excel spreadsheet.
Excel spreadsheets. So the calendaring is improved. We do have, we did put in place, you know, monthly updates. We continue with our speaker series, which we just heard was so well received last night. Communication and outreach to the communities, whether it's, you know, continuing to partner with Vensback and finding better ways to do that, or working with our towns and being ever present, or our recent update of finally having some sort of identification of what 10 districts looks like in a visual representation, and bringing our back-to-school newsletter online in a very electronic format, digital format. So we're going to continue that. But the areas that we're going to focus on, I think the direction that we're going to move in is more measurable outcomes using data and a strong focus on teaching and learning and instructional practices. We spent a lot of time on curriculum, we spent time, some time on assessment, and the power of CIA is the eye in the middle. And as we go through our other goals, my other goals, we'll talk about how we're going to realize that. But we're going to start that process this year. My goal is by the end of this year to be able to present a document to you that articulates the progress we've made on the key indicators and goals that we identified six or so years ago. And to really present to you what would be a reasonable draft of the next generation vision 20, whatever. The principals have asked me about their school improvement plan. If you've been on committee for some time, you'll appreciate the fact that you may have watched presentations and each improvement plan looked different. It had a different content from school to school to school. And we have spent, the purpose of a strategic plan is so that schools have a target to hit and that they move forward because the goals articulated in the plan make sense for the schools and the direction that we want to move in as a district. And so over these last five years or so, when you sit through a school improvement plan presentation by any one of the schools, there are clear goals that can be identified in each of the schools. How they address those because they're at different levels of proficiency, if you will, change, that's the uniqueness of all of our schools, and the way they do that is unique to their particular school, grade span, indoor school environment. So that was a huge step forward. Principals are asking, okay, we're ready. When are we going to, you know, what's the next design going to look like? So it's important for us to move in this direction because our principals are ready now to align their improvement plans to the next generation. So they're going to look the same, their improvement plan format, for probably another year, another year and a half, until we're ready to launch our next strategic plan. And then they will naturally align to that. So it's exciting work, and we're all ready to take that on. The second goal is again what we just, I talked about a little bit with Matt coming on board and Cheryl's much-earned retirement coming up, and that is again to provide that leadership and financial expertise in the area of business operations. We continue to look at how we want to restructure that. We've talked about a transportation coordinator and identifying the delivery of business operations and services. As you know, we still have the accountant budget officer position, and that's moving towards a new model with input from a lot of folks. And that still needs to be placed. We're using a third-party vendor still to do that work and oversight, which may be the model we want to continue with, looking forward to the conversations that we're going to have with Matt. And even the position of director in finance and operation is a very different job description with very different roles and responsibilities than perhaps what the budget director's position was. We're evolving. So my goal, my measurable goal, is to establish and continue effective management practices which you will see through our operations and our conversations and be very evident and very visible in the conversations that we have as we prepare for the budget. Goal number three is to facilitate and to continue to facilitate the proposed phasing of the feasibility of solar energy in our district. We knew this, I knew this was going to be a multi-year goal, and to some extent, it's a goal that I can't necessarily achieve unless we're in time with tie and bond and in time with, you know, the RFP and willing to take that risk as having it as a goal again this year because it is very important to us as a district. And it needs to be something that we continue to pursue if, if only to say to the, our school committee, our school community membership, you know, we're trying everything we can to help the community support our schools and to do that in a way that sends a message to our students that we too are looking forward and we believe in innovation and we're going green. It's important. So we're hoping there's a financial benefit to that, and we'll figure that out once we move into phase two. The student improvement goal, very, very exciting with Greg's leadership and the leadership of the cohort that we sent to Harvard last year. We are moving forward with instructional rounds that connect so nicely to and so appropriately to our goal of having our next version of strategic plan be focused on instruction, teaching and instructional practices. Basically, we are trying to assess and determine what our instructional practices are in the district and how we better can support instruction and support of the curriculum by being more aware and knowledgeable of what practices are in place in the district. And so instructional rounds basically is a collaborative process by which the administrative team and then our curriculum leaders and certainly then teachers will engage in active and continual dialogue about what we do, and that is teaching and learning. So we're very excited about that, and with that, we're launching, which is moving into goal number two. Five years ago, we established the curriculum leadership model, and that was designed to get more people talking about curriculum and the alignment process and the standards that were before us at that time. And we created an opportunity for more people to take on a leadership role, and that was through our curriculum leadership team, and they wholeheartedly embraced Atlas or the notion of using Atlas as a tool to align our curriculum. And so the next logical sequence in that process is to become better at analyzing data so it can inform curriculum and instruction. So with the instructional rounds, which is a three-year initiative, if we want to get this right, can't be done overnight, we're a large district, we have to educate ourselves first so that we can better educate others and so that when we're going into the classroom, we're going into the classroom with purposeful outcomes that will help improve student achievement, student growth and student achievement. And so goal number two is that next week, we're going to launch DataWise, which is a concentrated, very focused training for our curriculum leadership team. We're up to 41, K-12, all three districts will be coming together for shared professional development so that we go through this training program and this experience together. I'll be going through it, Greg's jump-started ahead of me, but we'll all be going through this together. The folks that went to the Harvard, the principals that went to the Harvard Institute, the week-long instructional rounds training last year will also become lead trainers in this process, so we're really excited about that. Again, thoughtful, purposeful, with outcomes designed to improve student achievement and growth. So that's the next goal, and that's exciting. And that's it. So questions?
Yeah, the last two goals on student improvement, is it fair to say it would help you with differentiated instruction as well?
Yes.
Good.
Yes. And that's the entire range. I mean, I think sometimes when we talk about differentiated instruction, we tend to think more of the student support services area and only thinking about, you know, a certain construct rather than the whole range, the high, the low, the middle, and everything in between those points. So absolutely.
The whole range, especially kids at the top.
Any questions?
I was just going to comment is that I appreciated your comments at the beginning, knowing we have these staff changes this year because while the new evaluation tools are good in that they make us have goals and measure them, I think sometimes it gets lost that really that's the job of the administration and should be the main focus is that we want our schools to run well and we want to support our leadership and our teachers. And this year is a big transition year for lots of places. So yeah, while I'm not diminishing the importance of this, I think, I personally think that that is the number one goal, is to make, to make sure that's all in place, so.
And pass the budgets.
Yeah, we'll get back to that.
I will have to say that one of my own personal goals, professional goals this year is to get into the classrooms. And it's always a challenge, no matter what the level of administration you may find yourself in, even if you are or at, even if you're a building principal, it's sometimes it's really difficult to get out of your office. And, you know, with the meeting schedules that we have, it can be even more challenging, but it's something that for me is critical. And so for the last three Mondays, I've been visiting the schools. I purposely scheduled and sent out the invite, so I really had to go, even though, you know, the phones were ringing and so forth and there were meetings to be scheduled. But it has been just so uplifting. And so far, I've made it to, I've been able to visit for about three hours each school, six of the schools. And so once I finish that round of Mondays, we'll take a little week off and then start again. And the feedback from our teachers because they are so proud of what they do. There wasn't one second that I can determine that there was anything but welcome to my classroom expressed by the teachers, not because of my title or who I am, but because they really feel the joy of learning. And you walk into the classes and it's just alive. The students are engaged, and this is Northborough, Southborough, the high school. It has just been one of the best. Last year it was negotiation, which sounds very strange that negotiations would have been a highlight. This year it's really been getting into the classrooms. Feedback from principals has been tremendous, and that's really what we are all about, no matter what our job is, no matter what our title is, it's getting in and seeing it happen in the classroom. And our teachers are artful, they are excited about what they do, and some of the things that we've outlined here, it's a team effort, could not do this without the team that we have at Central. The great partnership that we enjoy as a leadership team with our principals because everyone, these goals represent our common belief. And we're committed to these goals because we know it's going to make us better and it's going to help students continue to grow.
Any other questions? So we have the union and we have Southborough here. So Northborough and the region are going to have to do this separately, but do I have a, we're scheduled to vote on these, to accept them. Do I have any motions?
I'll make a motion on behalf of the superintendency Union that we accept the superintendent's goals as presented this evening.
Okay, moved by Patty.
Seconded.
Seconded by John Kane.
Same motion for Southborough?
Moved by Paul Desmond, seconded by Mary Beth. Okay, any further discussion? No? All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Okay.
Off we go.
Off we go. Well, yeah. Okay, off we go to the next agenda item, which is the proposed 2018-19 school calendar, a discussion of the October 25th presentation, which will be our next combined meeting.
Yes, it's an extra meeting in October. There are two versions of this time each year, and the month of September, we consider the next year's calendar. And last year, we presented a little ambitious, three years' role ahead. But these calendars that you have before you tonight should look familiar, they were presented last year. One is the, we call it the standard calendar, no changes. And the second is the calendar with, as proposed last year as a draft, no religious holidays. And this was the calendar that we sort of moved forward to some level of conversation last year, and because of that, we have been, as we discussed, conducting additional surveys. We are going to send out, I'm going to send out tomorrow, the same calendar, the same survey that was part of the back-to-school newsletter to just the teachers. I've talked with the department chairs today and told them, please encourage your teachers to respond to this. We are going to send this out to the community again, and the PTOs and SOS and APTO said that to help get as much feedback as possible, they would then send the link up to their membership, which is great because what we want is feedback. And, you know, what, how we analyze that will really start, I guess, on October 25th. We will be working together to create a summary. So this will be a survey that validates, invalidates, or provides additional data. And we had a survey last fall, last spring, and we wanted to do it at a different time. So we'll be sharing that. I would love to gather some additional input from the committee. What else would you be looking for specifically that will help us in the conversation? We have the survey of what other districts in our area, areas would be doing in terms of their calendar. I will share with you yet again today on the superintendent's list, or what are you doing about your school calendar? It was out last year, it was out again this year, so a lot of different districts are taking this up for consideration. I will have to say, I got a phone call today from a mom in Northborough, and she said, so the calendar's set for next year. I said, absolutely not. That's out there on, you know, apparently one of the many social media sites, and of course, we know they're always right. In this case, I had to say, I'm sorry, it's not accurate, and there is no approved calendar for next year. That's why we have conversations every September. If we're, you know, we have a target date, but if the conversation still continues, then we won't have one by December. I will also share with you that I received a call the second day of school asking when school starts next year because they're trying to plan their vacation. So when I say, you know, people look for the date in December, they really do. They're already looking for that information.
When's it going to start?
Next year.
Next year.
Well, hi, we've been in session for two days, so I'm not really sure yet, but we'll, we'll figure that out when we take that up for conversation at the school community. So beyond, you know, the survey data, the information that we have about what other districts are doing, is there anything specific that you would want us to bring forward to have that conversation?
Yes, there is one thing. The religious holiday is always a contentious issue or an issue that needs, needs to be, needs attention. Is there any way between now and October that we can, that we can reach out to people within those communities and ask them to either attend the meeting or ask for some feedback?
Which communities?
This would be.
Alex? I'm sorry, which communities?
These affect really, it's the, it would be, good for, it would be the Christian, the other holidays would be the Jewish communities.
Within our towns?
Within our towns.
Okay.
But the flip of it is that we've been asked for other holidays too, so it's not just those two.
Right, right, but I think the big issues around the religious holidays, and I would feel so much better if they were advised that we're speaking about it, and if they show up next week, they could just tell us, next month, they can give us an idea one way or another of how they feel about it.
If we wanted to have a broad stroke, with that in mind, I can certainly send a one call to our school communities and say that the combined school committee will be considering the 2019, 2000. the 2019, 2018-19 calendar at its October 25th combined meeting. Because I think to Mary Beth's point, if we send that out in that manner, then anyone who has a particular faith in the community may want to attend as well.
Yes, see, my concern on that though is that it might not, it might not be apparent to the people that it means that the two major Jewish holidays would be disappearing from the calendar. That's my concern, is it might just go right over people's heads and they, you know, I think we have to be, I think we have to try to go out and be more assertive about how we approach it.
So, we have got, I think this year, I have received some emails from the local synagogue, the association of not only parishes, but also the synagogue that usually contacts us. And I can certainly reach out to them and tell them that it's coming, that we're gonna be, you know, having this conversation, absolutely.
I think that's really what we need and then they have an opportunity to come and to speak.
You're gonna reach out to the others?
Yeah.
How are you gonna reach out to the others, all the other religions?
Right, 'cause the part of the issue on this isn't just, the reason that this is an issue is because we have Christian and Jewish holidays on the calendar and we don't have other religions on the calendar.
I know.
So, that's, you know...
That was a one call, thinking that if someone was of that faith, they would...
Right, exactly, so that's the issue here.
How about if we do, there's always, there is the issue of somebody else asking for a day, we've always said that. I think, how about if we do both? If we inform the Jewish community and the synagogues and then we do the one call?
In complete, being completely responsive to those that have reached out, then that should also be a contact from my office to those who are not of the Jewish or Christian faith who have contacted me. Because I have gotten emails and I would be concerned if we purposely went out to and not to all.
Right.
Then we should go to all.
Yeah. Well, that's what you're saying, is sort of putting a general...
Right, but there's two days in that, the difference though is on the calendar suggestion for next year without religious holidays, there's an impact where two religious, two Jewish holidays are taken away.
Practice.
Okay? Not where somebody might ask for it later and then we have to deal with that. This is something that's actually being taken back, so I think...
And it's only because Good Friday happens to fall over April break, but if not, it would be, we would only make the change, it's setting a precedence or a policy. So, it's also, it just happens to be which, you know, Yom Kippur could fall on Columbus Day, so this just happens to be that Good Friday falls over April vacation, but the discussion isn't just taking away, it's taking all of them away.
Right, it's taking away the three holidays and...
And not adding anymore.
And advising people that, right, so it is, it is...
It's impacting everybody is what I'm, it's impacting everybody.
But the people that it's being taken away from mostly are the ones that are gonna be mostly concerned about losing it. It's just, that's from my perspective, so...
But what I'm saying is it's also, it's as if you're talking, taking away, it's taking away Jewish and Christian right now.
Yes, yeah.
So, it's not...
It's Good Friday and the two Jewish holidays.
That's what I'm saying, you're focusing, it's both.
Right.
You know, whatever.
And I think part of it, because those are on the calendar that, Good Friday is on a week off, so...
It just happens to be, but that, if we do it, it's a policy on both. It's not, so that's what I mean, I think you're losing that, that it's a policy. So, we shouldn't get any discussions after this.
Well, I know. And just a reminder that Diwali falls on Wednesday, November 7th next year, so, and it's not on the list, so...
Thank you very much.
So, I did print out today the Anti-Defamation League's list of identified religious holidays and it was quite extensive, so I will bring that with me as well. And then, you know, I think the difficulty is honoring everyone and honoring all and not to be the ones to select how people celebrate their faith and making determinations about that. That's a very difficult position to be in.
And I think...
So, I think bringing all of that and contacting the people to the extent that I can to invite them to the meeting is a good strategy.
And that's really all that I would ask, is just invite them and have them speak and if no one comes, then I assume if they've been asked, I assume it's okay. Probably a wrong assumption, but...
Lynn, do you have a question that in no way could be misconstrued?
I just have a suggestion, is that okay? There is an interfaith council in Northborough, which members of all the faiths, and they have one in Westborough too, so the leader, like the clergy, they meet regularly and so there's, so that would be an area where you could, and actually, they're actually sponsoring a thing at the Northborough Library where learning about all the different religions, but they're a very active group, so, I mean, I can get information on like who to contact there.
Can you say that?
Yeah.
Will we suffer?
I think so.
Yeah.
I think so.
I think so.
It'd be worth it.
I think we would be worth it because, you know, about four years ago, we had the big discussion in one of the school committee meetings and people from many religious faiths, a lot of the different groups came in and they all spoke together and I'm not sure how the message got to them at that time, but maybe that was the way it got to them then.
So, are we thinking that when the one call goes out, will it specifically mention that one of the primary items under consideration is eliminating religious holidays? Because, I mean, isn't that kind of the crux of what we're doing? I mean, that's, I don't know if you...
That's the crux of it.
I mean, that would be notifying people that that's gonna be, you know, part of the discussion. I mean, I know it's touchy, but...
We, it's up to the committee if they wanna be that specific. We have certainly shared in many ways and in the survey what we're considering and these have been on the website and we will post these on the website and it might be worth perhaps in the one call directing them to the website, that these are available for viewing. But as I said, you know, there's no shortage of what is assumed to be already happening.
But if we really wanna let people know, that would be probably the most forthright way of letting them know. And I think if I got a one call just saying they're gonna be talking about the calendar, I really, and I don't know that people pay enough attention to really click on multiple links and look and compare and kind of figure that all out, so, I mean, that's, it's a thought if that's really the concern, is letting people know that that's one of the main things that's gonna be discussed.
The challenge to that, if I might add, is that it, we can't just stipulate them as being the removal of religious holidays because there are some religious, it could be interpreted as religious holidays that are mandated by the state.
Mm-hmm.
So, that clarification would need to be...
State and federal.
Right, state and federal.
Yeah, that's true.
Paul?
I have no problem with whoever wants to come, but we do also, we're gonna have information from the survey, right? I mean, we basically asked this question in the survey?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes, we did. And actually, we asked that question in a much clearer way the second time around. So, there was greater clarity and input from the school committee appreciated and it was very specific.
Good.
We also asked about PD days and the vacations.
School start dates and end dates?
No, just...
I just said the whole Labor Day thing, no?
Not Labor Day, but we had some interesting responses. And I think the interesting challenge for us is at what point is majority, majority? You know, is it 51, is it 75? No matter what determination we make, not everyone's gonna be pleased with that. And in the end, we need a calendar. And so, as we, as I looked quickly through, that was what I started to think about. What is, and what do we want to center on as significant enough to change or not change?
So, for the discussion, October 25th, I'm anticipating that one of the questions is going to be what kind of policies or, you know, procedures are surrounding the absence, excused absences of kids, no matter what the grade, in terms of homework, you know, missing lectures, et cetera, et cetera. So, anything that you could gather together in anticipation of that would be helpful.
Interesting that you asked because that was asked this morning and we reviewed that. I actually sent an email out to NASA to remind their teachers because this week, we have one day off for Rosh Hashanah, but it's actually a two-day celebration of faith. It's Thursday and Friday, right? I think so, it's a two-day celebration of faith. Our teachers who do celebrate this two-day holiday do request the second day, just as our, some of our students are out the second day. So, you know, our practice has been, we can't stop tests because that can be any day or assessed, but what we can be is extremely flexible and appreciative of the fact that one of our core values is appreciation of diversity and to be flexible. And that doesn't mean doubling up on the assignment and it doesn't mean giving the test the day the child comes back if there's been a holiday, a celebration that in fact, you know, when the student is ready. So, there are districts who have clearly identified that practice and that is something, you know, we've practiced, but we need to do a better job of articulating that. We don't also wanna be so rigid in that either, that it doesn't allow the flexibility that we want our students to have because everyone learns differently and every situation could be different, but definitely guidelines. So, I did have that conversation with the teachers that this will, this is our practice and they said, you know...
Did you get what you needed out of this discussion or would you prefer more consensus?
I'm good.
You're good.
I'm feeling that, you know, on the 25th, we'll have an interesting conversation and there may be the need for another one and maybe some more information gathering if we will come with what we have and prepared to go back out and get more if needed.
Okay.
So, it's official, we have a, the meeting in October 4th.
October 25th.
Okay.
Thank you.
What time is that? You know, there's no meeting...
There's no meeting after.
No, we can stay, the lights go out at 11, I know that.
I go out way before, out that door way before 11.
You know they go out at 11 because we couldn't figure out how to turn them back on that day, so...
So, 6 o'clock seems to be burdensome for anybody who's coming from any place for any reason.
It is burdensome.
It is burdensome.
It is 6:30, like...
It's tough.
Seven o'clock? 6:30 is better than 6.
Well, what about 7 o'clock since that's when we usually start regional meetings?
There is not, we're having a combined, out of region.
No, no, without region, yeah.
That's gonna be exciting. And true to your point, if we want people to be able to come to express their views, we want it to be scheduled at a time when they're able to be here.
I just put it in at 7 o'clock.
Okay.
It does conflict with the chorus concert here at the high school.
I'm sorry, say?
It conflicts with the chorus concert here at the high school, which is a problem for me.
And it's probably at 7 o'clock, isn't it?
I don't know, but probably.
Well, it doesn't have to be Wednesday, but one of the challenges that we always have is with 10 schools and a very, very...
Yeah, I'm sure it's gonna conflict with something no matter where...
Right, right, right.
Maybe we could have it written.
Well, so...
I'll be here.
He'll be here.
He'll be here, yeah.
I won't be here, I'll be in Rome.
All right, well, I forget you, 'cause you're not coming back for that. It will likely be audience sharing will be the first and that will probably go on for a long time and it will be recorded. So, are you going to be looking for us to actually vote on October 25th and choose the calendar?
I would suspect that would be likely.
Okay, in that case, then you can probably go back and review the audience sharing comments that you made.
It's one back and forth between here and the other.
It'll be for you, so you can...
If we normally would not vote on it early, I mean, that'd be the earliest we've ever voted on, yeah, it's a script, right?
Yeah, so this is just sort of...
We generally vote in December.
We vote in December for the calendar.
Yeah.
So, having the October meeting, there is a lot of, you know, public comment and audience sharing. We would have time maybe to have another meeting or at least use the December combined meeting to make a decision.
Right, and have a vote.
If we had to in January, not preferable, but yeah, have the vote in December. When we could follow, we could have another audience sharing. December agendas tend to be light at region and combined or have a fourth combined meeting on another date.
Then, yes.
This might be out of order.
We were about to adjourn, so there's no more order left.
I didn't, I, we had audience sharing and we talked a lot about this person named Christina Wilson.
Yes.
Smith Wilson, Smith. She's in the audience.
Didn't she leave?
She left.
She left.
Yeah.
She's not in the audience at all anymore. Oh, we're grateful she was.
We are thoroughly grateful she was.
Said nice things about her, she'll be excited.
Okay. That being said, Mary Beth?
I would like to make the motion to adjourn for both the union and the Southborough workmates.
Oh, do you like your second?
I'll second for the union.
Second for the union by Patty, seconded by Jerry, by Southborough. Any discussion over that? No, all those in favor? That is unanimous.